Firstly, apologies. We have an apology from councillor Staines and a possibly, but probably not needed apology for early or late departure from councillor Noon and councillor Thompson. I will ask that they be accepted. Secretary councillor Collins, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Against. That's carried, thank you. Confirmation of the agenda. The only thing that I'm aware of at this stage is that item number seven is in fact Part A of the item. So we don't need to change the order, just note that it is in Part A. Councillor Collins?
Thank you, Jack. Could I draw your attention to, well, I bet you a couple of things at the agenda. One is, this is an official council document, and I think it's a, there is an error, and an unfortunate one, albeit, that Ethel Stevens was quoted here as being in attendance, and maybe it should be noted that he's not.
Fair enough, I think we can sort out that. I thought, yeah, Pam's nodding, that's fine, thank you.
Okay. And the other is that, I thought, is the trip, yeah, the trip to China is probably still fresh in the mayor's mind, that it may be a chance, if it's got put on you, to give us a quick verbal update of how it went at the end of the meeting, or is that planned?
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. I was going to prepare a comprehensive report to come back, and it may be better to do that, then I'll know that I haven't missed anything, so.
So without any other comment, I'll move that the confirmation of agenda. The secretary of councillor Hudson, any discussion? I'll put that, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Against. That's carried, thank you. Item three really is just a reminder for all elected members to be aware of any possible conflict that they may put themselves into. There's nothing to be moved or discussed in this regard. So we move on to item number four, minutes of the Toto flagger set as museum board. They are moved. Councillor Vandervass, secretary of councillor, present. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Against. That's carried, thank you. So we now move on to item five, the Ataga Museum quarterly report, and we have Helen Horner from the museum here. Welcome, Helen.
Thank you very much.
Please take your seat, and we invite you to speak to this report. Thank you.
Thank you for the invitation. I'm very aware that you're running behind time, and the report is fairly comprehensive, so I probably don't have to talk to it so much, except to say that I've just left a very busy museum with the school holidays, so we are still very hopeful that we will at least meet, if not exceed, the yearly numbers.
Okay. If that's the subtitle of your comments, then that's fine. Any questions, councillors, for Helen? Councillor Tavish?
I see you've got a, just a sentence here on the Dunedin North Post Office building, and wondered whether or not you have any more comprehensive updates to give us. Possibly just because it's one of the more visual aspects of what you guys are doing at the moment, but every time I go past, it seems like there's new fitting, or a new window, or more scaffolding, or, and I just wondered whether there's a timeline for its completion, or anything like that.
I wish I could be a little bit more definite on that. We're still waiting for a definitive opening date. We're hoping that that will be in May sometime, late May. We're still hoping that.
Councillor Hudson?
Helen, could you tell us a little bit more about your July exhibition that you're busy working on at the moment?
The Shanghai, one of the minor, it concentrates on the minor cultures in China, so there's nothing, it's all about the Han, Chinese Han culture, it's all about the minority cultures. It has a wonderful set of objects, there's jewellery, there's embroidered tapestry, there's a huge amount of different craft materials from the different cultures.
Councillor Noon?
Thanks, Mr Chairman. Helen, my question's just around the new website that's been developed in-house, well done. I just wondered whether there's an opportunity there, or if someone is on the web, are they able to tap into other tourist attractions, is there some linkage? I know you'd want them to come to the Ataga Museum first and foremost, but just wondering whether there's an opportunity for them to tap into other tourist activities in the city by way of information, that sort of thing.
I'll have to be very honest and say I'm not sure about that. We have a number of sort of milestone dates where different things are going to be introduced to the website, and I'm not sure whether that's one that has come up or not, but I can certainly let you know.
Question, councillor Stevenson?
Okay, visitor numbers tracking slightly down, does the weather, the finer weather, mean that there's slightly less attendance at the Ataga Museum?
The weather always does have a definite effect on it, and we have had an incredible summer. By the way, that might not continue very much longer, and we may catch up. That is one of the factors we find, yes.
So like with our visitors to the city, do you promote yourself as a wet weather option to try and encourage people that are scratching their head about being too wet to go to the peninsula, to go and see you guys instead?
I guess we've been trying to get over that, people only come to the museum when it's wet, which most definitely, we are making good progress on it, so we don't just advertise ourselves as a wet weather option, but we most definitely do position ourselves as, come here first and see, you know, the, like the arbitros, for example, where you can find out all sorts of things, and then go and see the real thing. So we try and be the starting point for many.
Okay, like an introduction?
Yes.
Okay. And with the post office, the old post office, and the renovations that you guys are doing there, can you tell us how you envisage it being used in the future?
We envisage that for about nine months of the year, it will be used as a gallery mainly, and so we have our first exhibition, which we hope will open, as I said, end of May or so, which is on the heritage lost and found, so Dunedin's changing landscape. And so we'll probably have two exhibitions like that every year, and then over the summer area, it will be mainly a venues, space in which hopefully it will then pay for itself. We have to be able to have some income for it to pay for itself.
So it'll be a commercial venue?
Yes. It'll add to the ones that we have already, for the functions, weddings, all those sorts of things, perhaps not balls, may not be big enough, but those sorts of things.
Okay, I didn't realise that.
Yes. But that's only over the summer period, rest of it will be mainly the exhibition space with some function.
So you believe the space will create a certain income for the museum?
Yes, it has to. Because we have no funding for it, so it has to pay for itself.
Councillor Collins?
You're picking up one or two awards, which is nice to see there, that's excellent work.
Thank you.
And I wanted to, apropos of that comment about the visitor numbers, the success of the Setters Museum has had a little effect on your numbers, you won't know until you track for a bit longer, but that is always a possibility.
It's always a possibility. I think we expected it would have a lot bigger effect than if it has, it has, because we really haven't seen a huge decrease, so.
And when are you starting the operations to the cafeteria?
To the...
The coffee bar?
Oh, that has been deferred for a decision until the new director arrives. At the moment, it's not going ahead. The conservatory you're talking about?
It is, but that's all been publicly stated that it was happening, has it now deferred at all?
It was never, it has never been publicly stated that, it's been approved, no. It was always a planned concept.
Right. I just read about it.
Right, and the board has deferred it until the new director on board, which is the end of May.
Okay, there's no more questions. It's moved by councillor Wilson, secreted by councillor Hudson. Is there any discussion? If not, I'll put that, all those in favor, please say aye. Against, and that's carried. Thank you very much.
Mr Chairman, I've been away, but councillor Wilson may wish to add some comment, that the new director has been in town for a few days, revising himself, and preparing himself to, and starting his early engagement.
He's, he came over for a few days and to the Setlar land and to meet staff, one-on-one, and to do more tours, he's actually been here twice now, and he then joined the mayor and dedication to Shanghai, and Claire Wilson and Graeme Crombie there, so he's just got back to the UK in the last couple of days as well. So he's up and running with us already, albeit not fully started.
Thank you. We move now on to item six. I invite Pauline and Nick to the head of the table. This is the report in relation to the disposal of dredging from the Ataga Harbour. Councillors, you'll notice in front of you is an additional form, it's actually a replacement form, page two of this report. This has an extra couple of items under the implications, and also the recommendation wording has been tidied a little. I think that was right, I suppose. But Pauline, I'll let you give us an introduction to this.
First of all, apologies for the page two, how it happened, I have still no idea, but I will find out.
Just blame Nick.
We'd like to, I'd like to emphasise first of all, because we are talking about dredging disposal, that we are looking at this with the utmost care, and we know there are a lot of sensitivities around it, and those will be looked at, and any condition we think that needs to be put into place will be put into place. I just want to make that very sure, that we are looking at this very carefully. We are working with all the parties that are involved in this case, we're working with the yacht club itself, and we're working with the rotary club, in their efforts, in how they want to contribute to the community and the aquatic recreation, which is the goal of that reserve, which is exceptionally good, because they are trying to do that in such a way that is beneficial to them and is no cost to council as well, so that's something we're trying to work with a lot. Again, the conditions that they need to be looked at, any negative impacts should be managed or mitigated in some way or other. It won't ensure that any short-term, well, mess will be eliminated, but it will, in the long term, should be able to increase the development of the reserve. And that's basically why we've looked at this and thought it was an opportunity worth looking at, and because the management plan clearly states that, no, we don't want it, but council does have the ability to make that choice, and that's why we're here.
Thank you, Pauline. Questions, councillor Wilson?
I'm sorry, I should have sent this question through, because it's slightly outside of this report, but my understanding, having had discussions with some members of the public, that there is a perceived potential use for some of this option five land for more shared space for rowers at some stage, or have I got the wrong area?
No, it's the same area.
Okay, so what I'm not clear about, or maybe I've missed it, is that, does the putting of this there preclude that ever happening?
No.
It doesn't, because I just want to make sure that we're not, on one hand, stopping us doing something else, because my understanding is that it's very hard to get rowing space, or it's best to put rowing boats away at the moment, and they're fairly well-used, and I just want to make sure that we're not including one thing with another.
If I can through the chair, I'd like to give assurance on that, that this is focused on developing the landscape of the area in terms of, it may or may not cut across at some stage some plans which we're not aware of for other people's, for sporting groups' use of the reserve, but it's not, it won't preclude any approved development or future development of any of the aquatic recreation facilities down there.
But it would, if people do have a need or demand, it would certainly be best time to put them up as quickly as possible, in order to make sure that we don't add cost to the process.
If I can through the chair, I think it would be good if anybody has any aspirations in terms of use of reserves to flagger it up as soon as possible, yes.
Thank you.
Just a question, on page sixteen, there's a couple of areas showing the map, I just hope to identify where, which of those five areas that are marked would receive the spoil? Does it each of the five areas, or is it just...
The area I refer to in the report is specifically the one marked five, I'm doing this as well, yes.
Which is beyond the cap back here at the moment.
That's beyond, and that has no effect at all on what we were talking about just now, because that's where the cycle path starts, and, but the, and the rowing is between four and five, basically, the recreation, so it doesn't look as if that's going to affect it, but we will be looking at anything that comes up in that way. But maybe much good to say that I'm already in contact with some schools that have been showing some more interest in getting this started in that area, so we are already talking to them, and they're not aware of these developments yet, but that will be something we will be discussing. Apologies, I haven't had a chance to go down and look at the sites since I got the report, but I, I mean, I'm relatively familiar, but I did think there was quite a lot of land that could have been developed, yes.
Chair, move. Thank you, councillor. Whether or not, questions first, councillor Tavish?
Thank you, I just, just wondering about the slight discrepancy between the report and the new page that has been, so on page six four of the report, under the title Rotary Developments on the Reserve, it identifies a maximum of 2,500 metres cubed of the proposed dredging deposits. The proposed motion, or the recommendation, talks about 2,500 metres cubed and ups to 3,550 metres cubed.
Maybe it might be good to clarify that, the two and a half, the two and a half thousand is concentrating on site five, which has been talked about between the yacht club and the rotary club, and how that could work. The other sites, we haven't gone into that much detail, they are preliminary suggestions that the yacht club have brought up to us, together with the ORC, who have been working on this as well, but we still need to look at them, and there might even be different sites coming up anyway, but that's something we don't, yeah, at the moment, we're looking at these.
To the page six five, I think under the assessment proposal, paragraph two identifies those other areas, which makes the distinction between the two and a half and the three and a half.
Yes.
Those other areas, we need reference to.
Yes, I can.
If I could through the chair, just again to clarify, because there is confusion around that, and that's the reason for the new information, is to, I guess, to make perfectly clear that volumes above 3,000, 3,500 have been talked about, requested, but this is, the recommendation here is between 2.5 and 3.5 thousand cubic metres. That specific reference that you make is a dialogue about a separate area.
Yeah, okay. Maybe I'm still missing something, but option one, which I think we're approving, but the recommendation is that we're approving, refers specifically to site five. What you're saying is that the 2,500 to 3,550 metres cubed may be for use on other sites, one to four?
Yes, that's the other, the one to four sites named in the report, that's what we're looking at. Could you go back to 6.5, that page? Yeah, it has point two, so it's the two, the last bullet says two and a half thousand, site five, and the other ones are site one to four, which is a possibility, but we still need to have a really good look at those.
Okay. So in approving, I'm just thinking that, I'm not opposed to any of this, but what I'm saying is that the recommendation currently approves option one in principle, but what, but option one is actually in fact just referring to site five, whereas what you're wanting is some in principle endorsement for some potential deposition on sites one to four as well.
The, just to make it clear, option one, as I read it, says, accept two and a half thousand cubic metres of dredging on site five in conjunction with rotary development, and investigate other sites to accept up to a total of three.
Okay.
Five, five, I think.
Yeah, okay, lots of habit.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Buzet?
Nick, I think is the one to answer this. The rotary and the Ataga Yacht Club are looking at the development, or in the management plan, I presume the council are going to be project managers, they'll oversee the whole thing, is that the intent of this?
Yes, integrally involved in that. Pauline, as the team member for the, for our planning team, has been involved since day one, and will stay connected to this as, I guess, the facilitator and coordinator. Council's interests are, I guess, paramount, and we made it perfectly clear throughout this process, the yacht club and the ORC, that will be reporting this back verbatim to council, and approvals will need to be paid.
Councillor Brown?
A question for Nick. Nick, are you sure we've had a cup of coffee and discussed this with Lou?
Fine, I'm not aware through the chairs, is there an option on passing?
Pauline?
I think you've just used that. Councillor Hudson, safer question, wasn't it?
I'm not sure whether it's for Nick or Pauline, but the Ataga Yacht Club seems to be charged with the full responsibility and financial cost of dredging the boat harbour. I didn't know there was an agreement in place to that effect, given that a lot of the public use the boat harbour as well. Why does all the responsibility fall back on the Ataga Yacht Club?
The reason it's stated in the management plan, in the management plan, it clearly states that we have no responsibility for the dredging. It's in, on, you probably see it in the, one of the attachment two. Now, you can see me hesitating, but it is in there, I haven't read it, it is in the management plan. Six point nine at the top on the right.
And do we have any idea of the estimated cost of doing the work?
If I can through the chair, the initial discussions with the Ataga Regional Council, and the, I guess, the work they were doing for the yacht club to progress their consent, was, there were a number of figures, I guess, in terms of rough estimate of costs. I don't have, I, we don't have a record of those, they were based on various volumes. This is not the full extent of the dredging, which, it's basically to dredge the entrance way into the area, and we do know that the Ataga Yacht Club couldn't meet the cost of getting somebody else to do this, and that's why they're trying to mitigate those costs by, I guess, looking for doing the work themselves, getting people to do work in kind, obviously under the conditions of the consent, and I guess begging and borrowing and trying to reduce costs. So I don't, I don't have a figure to mind, I'm not sure how well that was explored at that time, but we can certainly get that information, or ask for that if it's relevant.
There's no further questions, councillor Wetherall has moved. Secretary councillor Buzet, any discussion?
Sorry, I just have one other question. So this will be done in one hit, because of the smell issue, you know, so you just go in there, dredge it, and then that'll be it for a few years?
The chair, the dredging does need regular updates, how they're going to do this after this time, I am not aware. That has not been discussed, but doing this, going down to the 6,000 square metres, what we ultimately are planning to do, that will keep them safe for a while, yes.
Yeah, it just sort of makes sense, if you're going to do it, it's going to be stinking, just do it once.
Yes.
If I can through the chair, I think it's a very good point, I mean, that is kind of thing that we will be looking to get firmed up very clearly, as far as conditions are concerned.
Yeah.
Any further speakers? If not, I'll put the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, that's carried. Thank you, Pauline. Thank you, Nick. We now move on to item seven, natural burials pilot programme, this is, welcome to Lina, and Pauline stays as well. I'll let you lead the way.
This report is a result of investigations into introducing the option of natural burials into Dunedin cemeteries. It includes an outline of what natural burials are, and also a concept plan for a natural cemetery at Green Park Cemetery. The recommendation is to, is asking to notify the intention of offering this as a pilot project for a year at Green Park, and using the attached protocols, and also, so notifying that for public consultation for a month, and then reporting back to council for final approval for the pilot project.
Questions, councillors?
Councillor Thompson? I'm just wondering why you've chosen a year for the pilot programme, is there, do you think that the demand is going to be such that a year will give you a sufficient indication to answer whatever questions you might have in your mind?
I guess a year is just a period of time that we've chosen, there may be that demand, or we may have to extend it. It hopefully will give us an indication that the cost structures that we've set in place will be sufficient, appropriate, but I guess we have to plan a little bit by year.
It just seemed slightly short to me, but that's...
Councillor Wetherall?
I've got two or three questions, I apologise, a couple of these may have been questions I should have asked, but I hadn't got home last night. Picking up on the question of councillor Thompson, if the pilot programme is for a year, and I take myself as being an example of why I departed and applied to have, my family applied to have a plot, I see it as a single burial zone, and I understand because of the depth issue, but can I buy a double?
No, that's the short answer, the natural burial is, the idea of a natural cemetery is that, once the grave is used, then we put shrubs, or trees, or plants on top of it, and the area gets regenerated back into some kind of bushland. Before, at some time in the future, you're not going to want to come back and dig up an area, so there will be, the intention is that we'll have blocks of plots available at a certain time, as shown on the concept plan, and you will be able to choose one of those plots, but once they're used, they're used, and then we're going to plant them out, so you can't come back in five or 10 years' time and put another paper.
No, no, I understand. The convention of a, conventional cemetery is that you buy the plot, and because of the difference, you can bury two single graves, well, on top of the earth.
That's correct.
Well, the point I'm making is, now you've explained it, that's fine, so you can't buy the second, is I can go to a, one of the cemeteries, I can buy a double plot, I can buy that now, that's my right. So we're nearly clear, we'll need to be clearly understood, that when you buy, you buy for a single cask at one time, and that is the end of it, and you move on. So the concern about the one year is not quite so critical, or two years, whatever the period is, but it was my concern, was about the availability for families taking ownership of the space. Couple of other questions. Can a family contribute or assist with the planting over that site that they purchased, by way of trees, or contribution to that, or whatever it may be?
The intention is that there will be the opportunity for the family to buy a plant, a tree, or a shrub, to put on that site, and that will, they will have the opportunity to, when the contractor plants that, to assist with that. In terms of further planting, that would have to be at the discretion of council, because we don't know what other planting is going to be necessary until we start planting.
So there's no, at this stage, there's no anticipation, minimising what is, councillor Thompson could choose to buy, have his family buy him a totter, where I might be a flary one, and want a roti dinn?
There will be a list that they can...
No, that helps. And the other, the other question then is that, I noticed that limited access by way of gravel to the site, does that mean that at the time of a burial service, a hearse can access relatively close to the site?
Absolutely. We've, I've been working closely with funeral directors all through this process, and they're quite happy with what we're proposing.
Okay, and the other thing I noted in this quick reading, was that in this case, the family, or, yes, family, I use the word family, can assist with refilling the site, but that's not a, an ability that they have at any other cemetery sites, is it? They can drop earth in, but they can't, this reads like I could stand there, as you said, sir, I could stand there with a shovel, and I could fill the grave back in.
My understanding is that it is available to families?
On all sites. On all sites. So that's not unique to the natural burial. No, that's fine. Thank you for that. Thank you, sir. My comment is in support of it, is that surely we just need to make sure we well promote the key aspects around natural burial should council support, and I will for sure.
Through the chair, I think, I think it's absolutely critical that everybody who takes this option understands completely what it actually means. And we anticipate that we will have a form that will be signed, that anybody who wants to be buried in this natural cemetery completely understands what it means in terms of not having second burials close by, not having any headstones. And the potential that in the future, there won't necessarily be easy access to that grave. We need to make that absolutely clear and that will be done.
Councilor Collins?
I think you might have just about answered that question right there that I had. I know this is a recent way to bury the dead. It's not, but it's new to Dunedin. And therefore, I think that there are some people who may find elements of it a little spooky. And as such, would like to be perhaps reassured that it's a well-defined area, well-marked area, that when the shrubs and the bushes and things eventually take over, do people actually have access to walk all round there on that ground? Or is that keep off the grass type place?
No, it does anticipate that it will be publicly available for people to walk through.
So you can walk on?
Yes.
Knowing what's underneath?
There may be, there may be some tracks through, but certainly it will be available for people to walk through.
And is that why there's no headstones or any marking or any description?
There will be marking. So there are temporary markers that will be put on the site at the beginning, the wooden markers. But they will deteriorate and not be replaced, so. But that's just part of the ethos of not introducing anything that's not natural or not biodegradable.
So future family or extended family will know general area, but they won't know where?
That's correct. That potentially is correct. Yes, there will be, we will have a GPS record of where the graves are. That's a legal requirement. We need to know where they are.
Councilor McTavish?
Thank you. Just two questions. I guess what I find a little bit difficult to understand about the whole tree planting thing is that if one family chooses a totara, in 50 or 100 years' time, that's going to be a lot larger than, say, a kufai. And the kufai may end up not being there if it's in the shade of a totara. Is, are there plans for the graves to be spaced in such a way that it mimics the size of the plant that is going to be on top? Or is it going to be one of these sort of understandings that it could well be that the plant that you have chosen in time won't be there any longer?
We are trying to make the layout so that we can put the plants on there and they will survive. We are planning, there will be a list of plants that will be suitable for the site. I don't think totara will be on that particular list, but I won't be making that list. That will be with some other expert. The protocols also clearly state that we won't necessarily replace plants that die in the future. So there is the potential that at some time in the future, the plant that you've planted on your loved one's grave may not still be there. That is another one of the concepts of natural burial that you accept or you go with a traditional burial.
And in terms of the species list, is it intended that they be natives or is it intended that there is a mix of?
It's like, it's proposed to be a native bush at the end of the day, yeah.
Yeah, okay. And at the end of the trial, and I agree with Councilor Thompson, I think a year does seem like a short period for the trial. Is it thought that perhaps this, this approach may be extended to other cemeteries? I mean, it could well be that someone that is keen on this approach would really like to take this approach but would not like to be buried in this particular cemetery, would prefer a cemetery, say, in a March way, for example. Is it intended that this approach may be extended if the trial is successful?
That hasn't been anticipated, but I guess that's why you have a trial period and you have a review at the end of the day. If at the end of a year, we find that we don't have enough information to make any significant changes, we can always extend that period for another year. In terms of other cemeteries, we haven't actually given that any thought. Certainly in the other cities that we've looked at around the country that are doing this, there are, there is only one in the city. But certainly it's worth reviewing at that time.
And I guess if members of the public have a strong feeling about that, there will be a submission period for them to make that.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Councilor Wilson?
Just going to the proposed guidelines, there's a couple of various minor typos, but ones that need to be fixed before the motion's put. Just family and friends may, sorry, three D. Three D, may instead of my, at the end, last word. And this couple of contractors. What I don't understand is the memorials. And I'm sorry, why would we, I don't understand why fees are put in guidelines. I don't, I understand that we may note, but that's actually an annual plan issue, what the fees are for this. It shouldn't be in the guidelines because the guidelines, we could change the annual plan this year and change that. So I can see in the, what the fees set in the guidelines as being the same. And I don't know that that's necessarily something that's fair because if the maintenance is substantially cheaper than doing a different type of burial, then I think we should be encouraging potentially for the benefits that come from it. So I don't know that that fees, and I would prefer that that was left out or left as a note that in the first instance. That's, and I'm hoping to move amendment to that end. The second one is, if we're going to require the council contractor to supply and plant the trees, why wouldn't we include the purchase price in the interment fees? Because that keeps it as one transaction. It doesn't make sense to me that you have to pay a contractor to do the interment and, normally you have someone to completely differently do the headstone, but this is going to be potentially the same contractor doing the tree planting or the same, one transaction. It just seems to me that it should be one transaction rather than two. Otherwise you may not get the tree. What you want to do is encourage them to pay for the tree here, which is quite different in another, in a grave when you don't necessarily care if there's a tombstone or not. So here we want to encourage them to supply the tree, so we should make it one interment fee plus, plus, yeah, so, under four A, I would suggest that it should be purchase and maintenance will be included in the interment fee, in the third line.
It is potential that if we're offering different plants, there will be different costs for...
Appreciate, appreciate that, but that should be resolved at the time of the contract to buy the plot, not afterwards, because they may not then buy the tree. And you want them to pay for the tree. That's the whole point. Otherwise we're going to have to pay for the trees to have this bush area, I would have thought. Or do you think some...
Sorry, just something that I hadn't considered.
No, that's fine. No, that's fine. Maybe I missed something. I presume we want one tree per bod.
Right. Can I?
A what?
Understand what you mean completely. It's not something we've really gone around, but we've also been very wary of not wanting to put one price in so that it's not fair on people who've chosen for something that hardly needs any maintenance or needs a lot of maintenance or is more expensive or less expensive. I think it is something we have to have a think about.
And it's probably unfair to do it, so I'm happy to move in, in general terms, the guidelines, but there may just have to be some tweaking on those points, that's all.
But I do agree completely. We should make it as simple and as easy as possible. So we would look at that in that way.
Given that we're asking for, the recommendation is to go out for public consultation and come back to the committee at the end of that period, it's certainly worth considering those things as well. Thank you.
Councilor Bazet?
Yes, the divisions have sort of answered some of my concerns, but I was, I was going to make a case for not having a pilot program at all. Inasmuch as what happens to those who in the interim, in the pilot program, have been interned and then we suddenly decide, hey, this is not going to work. So we have a number of internments and we pull out on the break. So what happens in a situation like that?
We're not going to dig them up. They will, I guess we will just continue to maintain that area.
Well, there'll be some thought given to that and some policy for that because, I mean, if we decide against it eventually and if we're having a pilot program, then we're going to have to make a decision at some stage whether or not this is really going to go ahead or not. Then we should be looking at the consequences of what has happened in the interim, which is the prospect of some people being interned. And so what happens there?
As I said, that area will continue to be maintained as...
I mean, I agree with it. I think, and I'm quite happy to second the resolution or recommendation that Kate's moved, but I just think we do need to do some thought to that.
Councilor Butcher?
Just sort of carrying on, I guess, from where Councilor Wilson was coming from. By charging an all-up fee, including the plant, what if the family have decided that they want to bury, they want to dig up Uncle Charlie's lovely old rodo at the back from home and plant it on his grave?
That won't be allowed.
It won't be allowed?
No, it would have to be a plant off the list, off the planting list that will be provided.
Oh, that's a bit, that's a bit inflexible, isn't it? It doesn't have to be like that.
If the purpose of the area is to be a natural woodlands, a native woodlands, then I think we have to have some control over what plants go in there. We also have to maintain the area, so we're looking at maintaining it as a woodlands, as a native bush area. So, so we need, we need to have...
More research needs to be done on that question because I can imagine if there's somebody who's been a really keen gardener and who may have beautiful trees on their own property, the family may well want to dig some of those out and plant them on the grave.
Councilor Butcher, surely the whole concept of this, though, is different to a site where you have a gravestone and you can change the flowers every week. This is all about...
Yeah, I realize that.
But this is about somebody not really having a plot that is theirs for the, for eternity, that they can go and dress up any way they like. It's totally by breakdown stuff.
Yeah, I know. And that's why having a tree from somebody's garden who's may have nurtured the seed and grew it would be a really wonderful thing to do. It's going to last a lot longer than a photograph, isn't it?
But if it's...
I think more research needs to be done on this question.
Can I just note that it is going out for submission as a proposal? People can make submissions on that point and it'll come back to the committee for determination. Councilor Thompson?
Look, could I just signal a desire to move an amendment to just remove the pilot term? So that recommendation two would simply read the guidelines for natural burial that said that the attachment will be approved for public notification for one month and reported back to council for final approval?
Happy to second. Well, it's actually moved by Councilor...
I haven't accepted that.
You have accepted that, Councilor Wilson, and seconded by Councilor Bazet. Are you both happy with that operation?
Yep.
So it doesn't have to be an amendment. It's just the recommendations as per the order paper, less those last four words in number two.
Chairman, I've one further question. It's about exploring the information before it becomes out for submission process. And this may offend some people, but I need to ask the question. On the basis of, as I say, in my case, that I chose to be cremated, my wife chose to be buried in a natural cemetery. Do, will the rules allow my ashes to be interned, interned with her natural casket? Well, it's a thing of today. It's the way it happens in lots of cases today.
Or perhaps scattered in the woodland would be another...
Ah, well, that's fine. That can happen because it goes on all the time and people never know. The family do what they want to do, whoever. And that goes on around lots of places. But I'm asked the question of a natural cremation, having been the preceding partner that overcomes a two in the site. So the ashes, I know I use myself as an example because I have no secret about that, but my ashes could be intermed with my wife's in a natural grave. I realize that the container of my ashes has to be biodegradable.
Yeah, we have actually considered, given some consideration to the burial of ashes and I think that that could be considered on the condition that the container is biodegradable. Yeah, I don't think that would be...
I'm seeking the opposite.
We certainly haven't prohibited that or have any intention of being that hard and fast on that particular issue.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the second question.
Any other speakers?
It's been moved and seconded. Can I speak to the motion?
Yes, you can speak to it.
Sorry. I'd just like to thank the staff for doing all this work and bringing it forward, you know. It's been a wee while since it was first suggested, but thank you for persevering and doing it. And I think I suppose what I like about this the most is that this is a whole different philosophy to managing burial. In effect, it's like a different philosophy for life. It's about sort of being part of nature and being part of the forest and not about having a monument and not having the ownership of a plot. So it's quite different. And I'm quite proud of us as a city that we have individuals that are willing to take this move into a whole different philosophy and just being part of nature. It's awesome.
Any further speakers? If not, I'll put the two recommendations. All those who favor P S I.
Aye.
Against? Thank you, Wapo Jalana, Pauline. Now move on to item number eight, which is encroachment issue. And we welcome Mick back to the table as well as Pauline Stil. This is your day, isn't it, Pauline?
Duty of politics.
Quite happy to move this into the chamber. Okay. I'll let, Councilor Bazet is happy to move.
Second question. No, no, question.
Yeah, but I'll go into questions first. So, questions? Councilor Wilson?
I just want to clarify in my mind this case as compared to the one that was recently on TV, one, I think, on about Woodall Gardens. That was this, what this guy here is doing is the option that was suggested to that person at Woodall Gardens or similar, were they similar?
What's important when it comes to encroachments is that they're all different.
Okay.
Everyone is, everyone is different. The reasons why we found out about Malvern Street are completely different than the reasons that we found out about the Royal Terrace situation. The Royal Terrace situation was more than what we're now discussing. We've solved a lot and this is the last part of trying to solve at least the encroachment that's there. So that's, yeah. It's very hard to, they're both crown land, but one is a recreation reserve, this one. A scenic reserve, which is different.
And the second question is, and I'm probably being pedantic, but under eight point five, on page eight point five, under options, where you, option one, has no disadvantages on it, under it. And I would have thought that for some people, especially in Dunedin, but, and I have some sympathy with it, that any encroachment or reduction in the size of the town belt, albeit small, is a thin edge of the wedge potentially and does have some negative. And I just, it's just the report doesn't really state that as a negative. And I'm wondering why.
Because we're actually recommending that we should do this because it's a sliver of 40 to 70 centimeters, which is behind a retaining wall, which if we were to take it back, we'd have to rebuild a retaining wall. And for 40 to 70 centimeters, that's not going to contribute to the town belt in any way. Being able to put anything native up there, that'll grow because it's too close to the house and too close to a new retaining wall.
But that's still a negative in principle, but it's...
It's a negative as it is taking a sliver of land away from the town belt, yes.
And it's just, it's just making sure that that view is appreciated.
But it's only on paper that we're taking it away. We're not taking it away in practice.
Okay. No, appreciate that. Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay. It's been moved by Councilor Bazet, seconded by Councilor Brown. Discussion. Councilor Vandis?
I emailed council with some serious reservations that I had about this. I have subsequently had some information which I hadn't realized even... I have subsequently had some information which I hadn't realized, even though I had researched it before, which makes me not exactly confident, but at least not, not wanting to get in the road of this actually going through. By sheer Councilor Wilson's concern, the, the line on page eight point three that says the council, if the council decides that the land is no longer needed for reserve purposes, all town belt land is needed for reserve purposes, whether it's a sliver or not. And I accept that we are basically doing something which flies in the face of principle for, for practical reasons here and have been persuaded that this practical step is actually something which is reasonable to do. So for those of you that actually were able to see my email from the day before yesterday, if you could just keep their bays in the meantime and hopefully some other issues might be dealt with later. Thank you.
Any further speakers? If not, I've got the recommendation, all those who favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? And that's carried. Thank you, Pauline. Thank you, Mick. Thank you, Councilor Vandis.
So that takes us to item number nine, out of passion of agenda items, consideration by the chair. Just a quick update on the last two. One was the rodeo issues, which I think we're pretty much already. Who raised that? Councilor McTavish, I think. At the last CDC meeting, you raised rodeos on DCC pursuit land. And, and I think, and where we've gotten to today by way of the public forum, it's clear that at this stage, the status quo remains.
Well.
We discussed this at the CDC chair's.
Decided that.
Well, but at the end of the day, that the, that particular meeting, the issue that was raised was the concern of cruelty to animals. And that is not the council responsibility. That is for other organizations and they are very, very strict about it. What we, what we heard today, but we've heard this before, that the, the manner in which rodeos are undertaken is with the utmost care to animals. And it appears from the information that has come forward that the organizations that do look out for the best, the best interest in animals by way of care are in fact in support of this sort of activity. So I'm not sure where you're wanting your raising of this from the last community development meeting to go because it is not within council's jurisdiction to monitor or judge on how this activity is impacting on animals.
Is that a question or would you like me to respond?
Well, it was more, you raised it as an item for consideration and it's been considered and that was basically my answer to it.
Okay.
Can I just, with the rodeo business, because it is a council reserve and we don't allow circuses on council reserves. So that means that council does have the ability to dictate what does or does not occur on their reserves. But it was quite clear at the public forum that the national standards review is currently happening. So I personally believe that that should be the first action. And then after that, if the submitter who wanted the ban or the submitters that wanted the change in the rules, I would need to have some evidence for SPCA's view on this matter to, and look at the outcome of the national standards review. I think, I think it's just a matter of timing.
Again, that's outside of council's jurisdiction. Your worship, did you want to comment?
Yeah, well, I just want to point out with respect that making a decision based on the testimony of one submitter assumes that we believe them. And secondly, I think it would be risky to take any submitter's word on the attitude of another agency. So this, these submitters were saying, and they may well be right, but they were saying that the SPCA supports them. We have no evidence from the SPCA that that's the case, and I think it would be quite risky to accept that without, you know, getting verification. And secondly, we, council has jurisdiction over, as Councilor Stevenson says, over its reserves. We can choose the grounds on which we limit activities if we wish. We don't, we can't, we don't need to fall back on saying, well, animal welfare is not our business, so we can't, we can't restrict activities. We certainly can, we have that right.
That's fine. So your worship, would you like to suggest that a report comes to community development in that regard?
Well, I'm just pointing out that the grounds for deciding that this should go no further, I don't, I don't accept. And now I'm not saying whether I want it to go any further or not, I'm just saying.
Well, it has to come to this committee and my understanding is it was for me to make that decision. If you would like to suggest or call for a report to come to this committee in, in the regard, as you've just spelled it out, then by all means.
Well, I'm, I'm going back to Councilor McTavish's request. What I'm pointing out is that the, what we heard today in public forum isn't to me sufficient basis for a decision to not have a report. I'm not asking for a report or not. I'm just suggesting that a submission to public forum quoting someone else is not sufficient.
I was responding to the public forum from last time when the submitter was from the other side of the argument. And again, they were suggesting their concerns as to why we should not have this sort of activity on council reserve land. And their concerns were based on cruelty to animals, which is out of council's jurisdiction. So by all means, as you say, we can make a ruling that there are no such activities under certain criteria that, that, that happens on, on council own reserve land, but it needs to be instigated by a report. And based on the concerns from the submitter at that particular public forum, it was, their concerns were not around the, the usages such of our reserves. That was around the, the, their concerns and the way in which the animals are being treated. And that's out of our jurisdiction. Councilor McTavish.
I wasn't aware that I was able to speak to in response and, and I don't wish to take a view on this matter. I don't actually, contrary to the perspectives that seem to be, be explained around this, I don't actually have a view on whether or not rodeos should be an activity which is prohibited on council land. But I do think when someone brings something forward to a public forum and asks for us to consider it, we have a responsibility to do so. And I would be, I would still be supportive of a report from staff considering the issue for us to formally, as a committee, consider it and inform an opinion. And I, I agree with the mayor that the, while we have had two views in a public forum and that's fantastic, and I've really appreciated and learned a lot from both of those, it would be appropriate to have commentary from others and from experts and from staff on the implications of a proposed ban. And I actually think that it would be worthwhile considering it in two parts. There's been concerns raised about the stadium and the use of that venue for rodeos. And I think the, the matter of community use of, of open air public reserve for that purpose is quite another issue and perhaps would be well considered as to separate parts of one report. But certainly I would still endorse the concept of a report coming to this committee were the chair of this, indepth the chair of this committee willing to, to bring that forward.
Well, it's off back to CDC chair's meeting. Thank you. Councilor Thompson.
Sorry, I just recalled something. Council has a policy banning the keeping of exotic animals on public reserves. Presumably that is an animal welfare issue, so there's a precedent.
Okay, well, obviously there are definite grounds for a report, so we'll discuss it at the next CDC chair's. And a report will be requested. Councilor Thompson.
Well, look, could I perhaps suggest a little further? And my suggestion is based on what I just heard five minutes ago as to why a report wasn't required, which made, which made reference to a submitter who presented today. And if that were the case, that would indicate to me that the chair's decision was influenced by something that took place, in fact, immediately prior to this meeting and doesn't indicate to me that adequate and serious consideration has been given. And that would concern me. So if, if that is what the chair's consideration is.
Well, no, it was, that's what I'm talking.
No, no, let me finish.
It was discussed at the CDC chair's.
It may well have been, but the CDC chairs had not had the information presented to them today. And to make reference to it as a reason why we should be quite satisfied is in my view a spurious thing to do. Nevertheless, I sympathize with the chair in trying to determine, well, what is the nature of the report that is required and what is it that is being actually sought? And I think if you were to go away and have a further meeting, you would probably still be none the wiser. I think it would be probably better if Councilor McTavish were of a mind to do so, and others may wish to assist her, to actually come back with a more specific resolution that outlines what it is that actually is being sought. And I think that then could be done in a, in a, in a formal or informal way, could be sent through the chair for consideration, or indeed, I would have thought that any member could raise a matter for consideration through the appropriate processes should they desire. So given that it's not something that's immediately urgent, I wonder if that might be a better way to proceed so that the questions that answers are being sought to for can actually be specified.
Well, if I suggest that Councilor McTavish does, does just that and sends that through to me and I'll make sure that it's on the agenda for the next CDC chair's meeting and we will do the best that we possibly can to have a report scoped in such a way.
Can I suggest that any other members that have questions or so forward them, perhaps either to myself or directly to the chair, given that I know that others, it's not just me that has questions.
Councilor Wilson.
Sorry, I don't wish to prolong this discussion, but I am slightly concerned, I think there's a big leap between doing our setting policy on reserves, and I appreciate the example the mayor's recalled, and I recall being part of that discussion, and doing something on a company DCHL or DVML property land. Because one, we don't have the same controls or duties or responsibilities for. And I just want us to stop and think how that may impact or how we can do that because it is a, a different process than us controlling our own reserves. And I see them as quite different. And what we had submitted to us today, they were quite, when we got the submission on the first, and I think the submission today from the people against the rodeo, that was about the stadium, it wasn't necessarily about Wikoiti, and we seem to be extending it out. If we're going to look at this in a big picture basis, which is absolutely fine, I'm just wondering whether we should be extending it to other sports as well, because we don't know that rodeo is in history the worst or the best sport out there, using animals. And I just think it's a huge project if you start going down this line. I'm just saying it'd be weary.
Councilor Brown.
Yes, just building on what Councilor Wilson has raised, I just have a word of caution for council in that this subject, and I'm not taking a side on this subject, this subject was raised by one member of the public at a public forum. And therefore, therefore, if we were going to take one member of the public coming to a public forum that is going to generate a report that is going to cost in the order of $10,000, and that's a stated figure by previous CEOs, that a report well researched and well thoroughly investigated is in the order of $10,000. Is that a wise investment of council money when there's been so few people raised the issue? And that's just, you know, I think it's some.
Point of order, Chair. The concern that I have raised is about the process as to who is requesting the report. Councilor Brown is suggesting that the report arises out of the submitter's request. The report did not arise out of the submitter's request, it arose out of a councillor's request.
Just further point of order, Mr. Chair.
Hold on, I don't think either of those things report orders. Well, that's not, if you're going down the same route, I'm pleased.
No, well, the point of order that I wish to raise is that I believe that Carl Scott or Mr. Scott was, I think that's his name, was here representing safe. So I believe that it was raised by a group and I think similar concerns were reiterated today by the New Zealand Rodeo and Cowboy Association representative in terms of the suitability of the stadium as a venue for rodeos. So I don't think it is correct to say that this report was, or the request is generated out of the comments from one individual.
These are items for the chair. I'm very happy that it's been raised and you're going to handle it, Mr. Chairman, and it'll come back at the appropriate time. I think that's really all we should have been discussing right from the very start. Okay, on that note, are there any further items for consideration? If not, I will call the public part of this meeting to a close. Thank you all very much. And I'll move from the chair that we go into non-public. Second, Councilor Hudson. All those who favor, please say aye.